Good evening and welcome to our Murfreesboro City School Board Member. I will now yield to Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for Mr. Joe Thompson, who's the principal of Black Fox, and also Ms. Sarah Todd to come up and introduce the two sixth grade students who will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Mr. Thompson, if you will come up and I'll ask Ms. Todd, since they're your students, I'll ask you to introduce them, please.
It's my honor to be here tonight to introduce Mr. Will Pretty and Ms. Amy Martinez, two of our fabulous Black Fox sixth graders.
May we please stand?
(Inaudible) to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as it is from.
You may be seated.
Thank you so much.
If we could get an approval of our agenda, a motion for the approval?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Dr. Gilbert.
Good evening. It's an exciting time to be in Murfreesboro City and we do have a lot of communications. First of all, this is National Principals Month and so I'm just delighted that we have the principals that we have in Murfreesboro City and want to give, as they would say, a shout out to them tonight. So, we certainly appreciate our principals. And November will be, the 11th through the 17th will be American Education Week. The theme will be Great Public Schools: A Basic Right and Our Responsibility. We will have on February the 1st at Stones River Country Club, we will have our Excellence in Education Celebration that will be hosted by our City Schools Foundation, will honor Dr. Susan Andrews. So, we invite you all to attend that. And we also want to thank the City Schools Foundation. Recently, they awarded $57,000 in grants to teachers and I believe almost all schools, if not all schools, had representatives who had written grants for that. And so, we certainly appreciate the City Schools Foundation and their contribution to our students' learning. We'd like to congratulate John Pittard Elementary and also we'd like to congratulate Kason Lane. They are receiving student ticket subsidies from the Tennessee Arts Commission. John Pittard will be receiving subsidy in the amount of $1,133 and Kason Lane in a $615 amount. We'd like to thank Second Harvest Food Bank for providing backpack meals for an additional 100 more children. They already provide backpack meals for our children, but they have contacted us and they will be providing meals for 100 more of our children a week. And we'd like to congratulate MTSU. They are partnering with us. We're one of the school systems that will benefit from a STEM grant. Dr. Judith Ariarty-Gross will be hitting that up and our teachers will be receiving training on science and so this is a hands-on science project in partnership with Twin Cities Public Television. We'd like to thank the Colonel Hardy Murphy DAR Chapter. They are a strong partner with Hobgood Elementary School and they will be presenting Hobgood with a tree for their students to plant. This tree will replace one that was lost during a storm and in fact, the students researched Tennessee trees and they have chosen a white oak as the tree that will be planted by the DAR Chapter. The Board of Regents will be visiting Hobgood this week. As you may know, the Higher Education Commission Board of Regents are looking at teacher preparation programs and how they can get teachers into the classroom, the people who want to be teachers into the classroom earlier. Hobgood has a tremendous partnership with MTSU and is doing just that. So, we have several undergraduates who are going to be teachers that are regularly at Hobgood and they will be visiting Hobgood to look at that partnership. We'd like to congratulate Mitchell Nelson School's Principal, Robin Newell, and also interventionist Tammy Key, Kendra Ellis, Sheila Sharp, and Craig Neelius. They will be presenting at the 2012 Tennessee Reading Association Conference. Their presentation is called Swarm Intervention and Enrichment to Raise Test Scores. Their intervention at Mitchell Nelson is called Swarm because all the teachers come together and anyone who touches a particular child comes together and they look at how they can help individual children and so that's why you have that Swarm title there. And then finally, we would like to congratulate Discovery School this last Saturday at David Lipscomb. They went to the finals in the robotics competition. This is the first time that they have been to the finals. They actually came in fourth place, but please remember that they were competing against high schools in the area. So, that is quite an accomplishment and would like to thank the sixth grade teachers for their work with the robotics group over there at Discovery. And those are your communications.
Ms. Phillips.
Congratulations to all those folks and a big thank you to everyone who supports Murfreesboro City Schools the way they do, but I just have to take a moment and congratulate the City Schools Foundation for choosing such a good person to honor with the event coming up, Dr. Susan Andrews. It was my great privilege to serve with her all the years that I was on the board. I learned so much from her. She was an excellent model because her heart was always with the children and the teachers in the classroom. So, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Consent items. Board, I ask that you look at the consent items and I would entertain a motion for the approval?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Action items, Dr. Gilbert?
Your first action item is the approval of the new school design and I'm going to turn that discussion over to Gary Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Board members. As you know, we've been discussing the new school that we'll be building on the west side of town. I put at your place this evening some additional information, presented originally some design ideas to you at your retreat. We went over it at the work session and we had, some Board members were able to make a visit to see a school with a two-story design. Our current designs are one-story and I wanted to bring to you the option to look at a two-story school as well. In this packet of information you have, it has the dates, so you will know the construction schedule and what we would be, how we'd be progressing through the building of a new school. On the second page, you had asked for some information on cost differences in the two different designs, so we have provided that. And then the last few pages are the items that you've already received previously at your work sessions. We had, as I said earlier, some Board members who attended a field trip and I was wanting to know if any of the Board members liked to say anything about what they saw at the school, Mary, if that would be okay to ask Ms. Wade? Yes, ma'am?
No. I was getting ready to ask you if you had an extra, Mrs. Phillips did not have one to view?
Sure.
Thank you. And I'm sorry.
I was just asking if any of the Board members who went on the field trip would like to comment about what they saw to the rest of the Board?
Mrs. Renee, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So much is happening around me.
We visited Clovercroft, was that the correct name, on Thursday and I really went in with kind of mixed feelings thinking about a two-story building because we've had many discussions about the safety issue, having the second story, the stairway, and so on and so forth. But I was so pleasantly surprised when we walked in the front door of that school. It felt much more homey than some of our larger schools. You walked in the front door and you could see right out the back door. It was nice and light and bright. I was just very excited about it, excited about the concept, excited about the fact that this would save us quite a bit of money if we did a two-story building. I have lots of notes that I took that day, so if anybody has any questions about anything that I may have written down, I've got the answers or we have Mr. Johnson with us today who will certainly fill us in and share lots with us. I have a question. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask.
Yeah.
May I? It seems that I've seen that what had been approved was a school for 800. I think we need to immediately amend that and make it larger for 1,000. I don't know if this is the proper time or format or forum to do that, but I don't, with the projected number of lots and those that are already approved, I think we need to go larger than smaller.
The original proposal was for an 800 classroom size now with a core capacity for 1,000 in case you decided to go to 1,000 school. What we can do at this, if you decide to go with 1,000, is to do an add alternate bid for the additional amount. That way, you can make a decision when the bids come in if it's feasible to go ahead and build for 1,000 to begin with. So, we tried to have it set up, we can go either direction, but the experts are here on how that's done. If you'd like to talk with Mr. Johnson and Mr. Lynch, they can, I'm sure, give you the responses.
Well, I would like to hear that, but let's let Mr. Barrett and others who were with us perhaps talk about the school and what their impressions were first.
I thought it was a great experience. I went in too with an open mind and considering all our, most of our schools and Murfreesboro City Schools are one-story, I just figured I'd better go and check it out and see what a two-story school is about. And actually, I liked what I saw, liked the way it was organized. A lot of the teachers enjoyed being there. I asked, you know, I asked them, you know, what was the difference between being in a first story and a second story and they just enjoyed being in the second story. It felt homier, they said. And just, and like Nancy alluded to, it just felt more open, more lit up, you know, there's more opportunities for that. And, you know, it was just a good experience. I enjoyed being there and it was a nice-looking school, so.
I went in with concerns myself and I thoroughly enjoyed the guided tour that Mr. Johnson and Mr. Anderson took us on. I was concerned about the proximity of the elevator, of course, and it's right where it should have been, because when I went up, it let me out right near the teacher's work area. So, had a chance to look at that. I was fascinated by how the band room went into the gym and the auditorium where it made it accessible, whether they were handicapped or whatever, they could go through that area to get to the gym and stage area. I walked the whole tour. It was funny because I worried about the distance, but when I walked in the front door, I could see the back door. That was fascinating to just imagine and imagine the size of the school, but when you walk in, there was a little vestibule view there that I thought was really nice and then it went right into the principal area. But I could stand right there in that area and look straight out to the back. The layout of the playground I thought was nice. I know with us, we'd probably want to change a little bit of that with the space we'll have, but as a whole, I thought it was a very workable, workable idea for us. Ms. Renee and then Ms. Phillips?
Another thing that sometimes has been a concern for us on major streets, and again, we don't know where this property is or anything, but as far as the getting in and out of the school for parents, picking up buses, buses picking up, obviously. And at this location, the main road is Clovercroft Road, I believe is the name of it, and they have a separate entrance just for buses. Cars do not go on that route at all. And then they took their lanes of traffic off that main road and circled around to the very back and looped around. Everybody was loaded into cars on the back of the school. Of course, I'm sure that's just something that a principal or whomever would decide how they would dismiss, but at this location, they started dismissing some children in the front and then found it was easier to dismiss everyone from the back and then the cars went back out either onto the main street or could have gone through the neighborhood, but apparently the neighbors had closed off that street and didn't want the traffic into the neighborhood or something. The other thing that I thought was really a plus, as Mrs. Wade has mentioned, the music room, the building is kind of situated so that there are the main hallway and then three separate, what I would call, wings in either direction. And the center wing is kind of the core area. Of course, your cafeteria is at the front. The second area, you go to the right and that's where there are fire doors, I guess is what they would be called. So, in my mind, if it got too noisy, those doors could probably be closed. Just before you got to that area was a main set of restrooms that had a lock on the hallway side, not for the children, but for after-school activities. So, as you turned to the right, you saw, you went either into the music room, which Mrs. Wade said had access to the stage area, direct access if the children are doing program for the parents, PTO meetings, whatever, and then in, straight into the gym. That little area had a concession stand area that was closed off with a rolling metal door and then entrance into the restrooms right in that little, I guess, for lack of better terms, vestibule area there. And that way, those doors to the restroom on the outside on the hallway side could be locked so that no one from a ballgame or a production or whatever could get out and into the school. So, that's kind of a safety factor to me. But it was also centrally located. I thought that was a great idea. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, because it was just a, it was just a great design and I thought that was something that we certainly could use in our schools because we have so many activities in the evenings, basketball and junior pro and things that go on here.
The rooms were really nice. Had the cubby holes where it took care of a lot of the supplies and coats and everything. It was really nice and they had restrooms in that same area, so you didn't have to worry about going out in the hall. And the assistant principal and the teacher that was there let us know how they worked that, because it was two teachers almost sharing those two sides. It was a lot of fascinating things that was going on in that particular school that would also probably be, I hope, in the plans for us, but I'm pretty sure there's something Mr. Johnson would like to. You got a question?
I know, I have some comments.
Okay, alrighty.
First of all.
And first, then finish.
Okay. First of all, unfortunately, I didn't get to make the trip because I was committed to an event at another school I'd been committed to for a long time, but I really enjoyed hearing my colleagues' perceptions of the school. I probably, and I appreciate Mr. Anderson giving me so much information, I probably had more questions than anybody else, but I started, I was trying to think, what questions would I want to know since we're doing something kind of brand-new if I were a parent? So, I tried to ask all the questions that a parent might ask and one of the first ones and the main one, of course, for me was safety. Elementary school kids, you can get an image of kids traipsing up and down the steps. Are they going to fall, are they going to trip, are there going to be more, you know, bumps and bruises and little things like that? But apparently, the safety numbers come in about the same. Is that, is that true? Is that, is that our understanding, is that safety is about the same? And so, that was really good news. Another thing I was concerned about is, are we going to lose corridor space because of having the two-story design? Would we lose corridor space? Because I guess during the tornado warnings and one thing, all the children on the upper floor would probably, for safety issues, be brought down to the lower floor. That was a question I had. Another point that I believe Ms. Wade brought up was, would the upstairs windows open and close? This was another safety issue and we found out that they do not open. Also, let's see, the cost of the plan, since, how much is the actual two-story plan in the, in the overall cost, considering that we have a viable one-story plan? How much difference would that be? And how much time is actually lost because the core rooms such as art, music, a gym, cafeteria, library, things like media center are on the main floor with the kids spend, you know, in transport, in transport between those two, those areas? So, I've, you know, those are the questions that I would think about as a parent and those have all been answered to my satisfaction. I was just hoping that Mr. Anderson, you would share with the public the estimated cost savings of the two-story design as compared to the one-story design, so they'll know what we're talking about.
Okay, sure. There's many different factors. If I could, I'd like to ask the expert, Mr. Johnson, who put together the cost differences for you, but one of the major savings is on the roofing structure because we have a lot less roof to be building, obviously, because we're building a two-story instead of a one-story. Other cost factors, and Mr. Johnson, I'm going to ask him to give a better ballpark, but other, other factors that we would be saving money on is less site preparation that we would have to do because it's a smaller footprint for the school. We have the ability to save money that not in just construction, but in the operation of the school because the utility expenses are less in a two-story design. And the, having a pitched roof, we have, we don't have to worry about the issue of the, of the flat roofs that we always seem to run into where they seem to get worn out. These have a 30, 40-year to a lifetime life expectancy now, they're guaranteed, which really helps us on that. So, we don't have to worry about putting up like $800,000 for a new roof in 15 years. So, those are the type of things that come into play. This would also be a geothermal school. We will have that tested to make sure that wherever we decide to put it, that the soil is actually going to be working to help facilitate a geothermal. Overall, the cost savings is in a per square footage amount and the estimate we have saving at least $6.51 per square foot, which equates to over $800,000 in savings for this school design.
One last little follow-up thing I wanted to do is, is assure parents that the younger children, was it K through 2, would not be.
Yes, and I think that was, that was one thing that we noticed that the, and it's hard to describe, but as far as the stairways, I had in mind like MTSU stairways with really wide, but these stairways actually are probably, I don't know, couple, a couple feet wide, maybe three, two feet and then another, okay, on each side and there's a rail that goes up in the center. The other thing I guess that was kind of the realization is that most of our parents now live in the two-story houses. Most of the new houses that are constructed are two-story houses and I can remember having quite a discussion with my daughter, as a matter of fact, when my grandchild was two years old and she was going up and down steps. It bothered me a little bit. But what, what we have done is really been vigilant in talking with various school districts about the safety issue. One thing as far as safety is we had a discussion about the fire exit and what we've been told is they can evacuate the school in two minutes, but the other part, I guess, and Mr. Johnson, you may want to expound on this, I'm not the expert, but because there is a concrete floor between the first story and the two-story, the likelihood of the fire would, would really be much less because of the way it's constructed. Is that, would you?
That's correct. The second floor is a concrete plank floor that has poured concrete on top of it. So, you've got a fire barrier between the first and second floor and there is virtually no way that fire can penetrate that floor system, especially in the length of time it would take to evacuate the building in the, in the event of a catastrophe. But the, I want to clarify one thing Mr. Anderson said about the cost. We have done for Williamson County Schools four two-story elementary schools. What we did is we took the average cost of those four schools and compared it to the Pittard cost per square foot. Now, admittedly, they were bid during different economic times and two of those schools in Williamson County were built using the construction management method, which increased the cost per square foot. If you look on the data sheet that I provided, the first two were construction management. That is generally accepted as a more expensive method of contracting. The last two were competitively bid like you have elected to do on all your schools and those are the lowest price, but I didn't use the lowest price. I used the average of the four schools as a comparison to Pittard.
Mr. Barrett?
I just had a couple more things to add. I know there's been issues about safety in the stairs and while we were there, we saw kids walking up the stairs, walking down the stairs and the teachers were right there and they had no problem getting up and down stairs, but. And then the elevator, I asked the assistant principal while we were there, I said, have you ever had any issues with this elevator? And they said, not one. And they said, it's barely used, the one elevator they have now, so. That was, I know that was one thing we've, we've brought up in our discussions. We've actually talked about this at our last meeting, October 9th meeting, so this isn't the first time we've all been talking about this, but anyway, those are the few things I had to, had to add.
And I'm sure if there's a parent at home thinking, you know, that possibly they have a handicapped child, that would be on an upper floor and what would, would happen if electricity went out? Well, would, would one of you share with me, does, do we have, will we have a backup generator or in the plan?
The Clovercroft School does not have a generator. In the event of a power loss, the elevator would return to the first floor. So, if you had a handicapped student on the second floor, it automatically comes to the first floor. Williamson County Schools had elected not to put generators in any schools where there was a reliable power source and they didn't have very frequent outages. But with all the life safety measures that you have to put in, when you don't have a generator, the next schools that they build are going to have generators. Now, this is elementary schools. Their middle schools and their high schools have them. I would strongly recommend that you put a generator in your new building instead of dealing with the maintenance of all the battery packs for emergency lights, exit lights, fire alarm system, intercom system, all those have to have a battery power source. If you have a generator, that runs all of those features.
That's what I was thinking would be good.
Mr. Barrett and then Ms. Renee?
And you mentioned those battery packs on those lights. If we had a generator, that would actually save money over time because we wouldn't have to have those batteries on the, on the emergency lights?
That's true and those, Mr. Anderson would probably tell you better than I can, but I don't think those, those batteries last more than a couple of years without having to be replaced. Plus, they have to all be inspected annually and certified that they're good.
Mrs. Renee?
Sorry, I was chasing my pen on the floor. Mr. Johnson, would you mention the number of stairways because I'm sure our families at home probably would be interested? I know we had the main and then the fire stairways. Would you address that, please?
Each wing of the building has a fire stair at the end. There are only eight classrooms in each wing. The center main corridor has two monumental stairs which are open. They're not fire stairs, but they can be used as an exit. That means that there's a total of six stairwells in the building. The distance from any one classroom to a stair is only the width of two classrooms. So, that's a, from the, from the second floor, that's a real safety feature that you're that close to an exit and that's also why they can do their fire drills and tornado drills so, so quickly. Another thing that you talk about monitoring the stairs, an elementary school teacher is going to accompany their class to the gym, cafeteria, to the library. What they do is they station the teacher, one at the bottom and one at the top, and monitor those children. monitor those children as they go up and down the stairs. And these stairs are one-way each way, center rails, so the children are trained to use the right-hand side going down and the left-hand side going up. There's not any competition for, with the stairwells that way. The stairs are also carpeted, which I think y'all thought was unusual. But the reason they're carpeted is twofold. One is it makes the main hall much quieter, and secondly, it does away with the stair treads that are glued on to a concrete stair that quite often come loose and become a triff hazard. So that's the reason that the decision was made to carpet them.
If we were to increase the size of the building from 800 to 1,000, that would, I think you said, would give us 10 classrooms per wing, is that correct?
That's right.
As opposed to eight?
That's right.
Okay. So then it would be one side of the hall, perhaps three classrooms to one fire stairwell, and two to the opposite, whatever, however?
We would probably try to pair up the classrooms because of those cubbies. So we would probably have six classrooms on each side instead of four on three wings, and then one wing would be the same size it is now with only eight. That makes a more efficient design, because if you have an odd number of classrooms with that design, then somebody gets their own cubby and own two bathrooms, instead of sharing the space, which just adds to the gross square footage of the building.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. What about, he was mentioning that if we wanted to look at how much it would cost for us to go to 1,000 students, would it be like a parallel plan? You'd give us an idea on that? Is that...
Yes, that's called an ad alternate. We would design the building for a 1,000-student school, and then take a portion of a couple of wings and designate that as an ad alternate. I will tell you, our experience with doing that has been that the ad alternate price is so much less than the average cost of the entire building, that every ad alternate we've ever done like that has been accepted. If the average cost of the whole building is $110 a square foot, those classrooms are probably going to be in the $60 to $70 square foot range. And the reason being is your expensive space is in the cafeteria, the kitchen, and the gym, and your main boiler room, which is going to be there whether you have those classrooms or not. So your classrooms, bottom line, are the least expensive portion of the building.
A few more questions. One is, so I'm very concerned about, is all the principal space, is there an assistant principal on the second floor, office space? Is it, you know, do you have someone upstairs that is...
There are offices on both floors. They have elected to put their assistant principal in the main administrative suite. The designated space for the assistant principal is to monitor the rear doors. And there is an office suite down there that has an office and a secretarial space, but they have not used it that way. There are also, I think, three offices, undesignated offices that they can use however they desire on the second floor, in the center of the main corridor, so that they can, they step out their door, they're halfway to the end of the building in either direction.
So essentially, each floor kind of acts as a mini-school?
They could use it like that, yes. Yes. Each floor has its own teacher work area, its own staff toilets, its own group student toilets, and that, probably need to point this out, they only have in that building two large toilets, an entire building, because they have two toilets in each classroom, which works out really well, because it, there's always, generally always one available. But there's only two groups of the large toilets, and that's a significant money-saving measure. It's even more so from a maintenance standpoint, because those big toilets are where...
And it is from...
They can make a mess.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Johnson?
Thank you.
Mrs. Rineer?
Someone, I don't recall, who mentioned something about the width of the hallways. Didn't you say they were as large or larger than our present schools, our newer schools?
First floor, main corridor is wider than yours. That main hall, the sub corridors that go to the classrooms are the identical width as yours, which they have no walkers in any of the hallways.
And the one suggestion that the assistant principal made to us was additional adult bathrooms, I think?
Yes.
And I think we talked about, because there was, there were so many small office spaces and small little rooms upstairs and in different places, perhaps that could be accomplished?
That could easily be accomplished.
Okay. Thank you so much.
If there are no more questions, I hope at this time, Board, we're ready to entertain a motion on our building.
Do we, do we need to first decide the size before we make the motion on the building? Or either way?
It's whichever...
Ms. Baker?
I see her thinking about it.
You need to make the motion as to whether or not you'd like to approve the one- or two-story design?
Regardless of the size?
How would you prefer it? I guess you could make the motion to amend the size first, and then do one or two-story.
Okay.
Mrs. Rineer?
I would like to make a motion that we amend the original design approval of the school. Instead of a school of 800, make it 1,000, please.
Is there a second to the motion? We're making an amendment to our first motion to make our school the size 1,000 versus 800.
I'd like to ask a question to Dr. Gilbert about that. Is that okay?
Okay. Well, we asked for that second, Dr. Gilbert. You have a question for her?
Yeah. I mean, what do you think about that?
I would like, as far as I'm concerned, I'd like to see only schools that are 500. But reality is, I think that our schools have done exceptionally well regardless of their size. Now, when you get over 1,000, then it gets a little, then we're looking at adding an assistant principal or somebody to take care of that. I think that, I think that that's entirely up to the Board. I mean, I think that, would I like smaller schools, yes. In reality, though, that's very difficult with us in the building stages that we're in. I think it's more important for us to build a school the size that will accommodate the students that we think we're going to have.
Okay, Mrs. Phillips?
We need to go ahead and get a second and then have discussion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm glad to second it for discussion.
All right, thank you. Now...
And that's, that's what my point was. I'm glad to second it. I just wanted to know, I, maybe, do we have to know tonight whether it's going to be 800 or 1,000? Do we need more information about the growth in that area? Or, you know, I mean, I'm, I want to do whatever's right, but do we need more information? And does that decision need to be made tonight?
The, the growth in that area is, right now, we have, right at 2,100 students. If you just take the area of scales and case, and just, say you add another school with no additional students, you've got three schools with 700 students each. That is the fastest-growing area we have. And when I look at the borders, how far the city can expand, it goes all the way to the Williamson County line out Highway 96. So that has the potential to have additional growth. As far as whether we need to do 1,000, if we do the, if you make that available, that we can go that high, you can always do the ad alternate and decide not to go that high and go with the 800. So I was thinking, and I would lean on Kelly on this, to be safe, it's better to say that that would be the maximum you would go, but you always have that, when bids come in, you always have the opportunity to say, "No, we're going to go with the 800," because we'll bid it, structure it that way.
Dr. Brown?
Based on the current growth of Murphysboro, when would you project that we would need to build another school after this school?
We are growing this year at 3.3% right now over what we ended last year. We grew right at 3% last year. Before that, we didn't have the growth, so it's been fluctuating. Where the next school would have to go would not be in that area. So if, are you asking specifically about the west side, or are you asking about any...
Just in general.
In general?
I'm trying to get an idea of, if we build a 1,000-student school, would that allow us to delay how many years before we would have to consider building an additional school?
Since it's only on the west side, I think we'd be good over there for at least five, six, seven years. The issue is going to be much stronger on the north side of town, which they're having apartments and things come in there, and John Pitterd is already over capacity, and they're building apartment areas in the Armistice Zone. So I'm more concerned with that side, once we get this school built and open. And I would think then, we're probably looking at another school, depending on what we decide to do in zoning in the future, within another four years, as we'd have to be doing something.
And I think that a lot will depend, too. You're looking on the west side, you're looking at 840, and not knowing exactly what the impact of that will be, that's really going to be coming, and it's here, but really, once that opens all the way through to Williamson, that will make a difference, I think, probably. And we may see more growth on this side of town, too. And with looking at a new park on this side of town, I'm just not sure what the impact will be.
Mrs. Rineer?
Well, I believe we were told that there are 667 lots already approved, and I think Mr. Anderson told me that there's a formula that the city uses to project the number of children, and I don't know that you have that information tonight, but I would think if there are 667 lots, you might guess that there might be one child an average per household. You're right at 700 already. So that's, that's my reason for thinking we need to go bigger rather than smaller.
Are there amendments on the floor to amend from 800 to 1,000? Now, we've already heard Mr. Anderson say, "If we get into it and want to back out of the 1,000, we can go to 800." So we've had a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion before we ask for a vote? Call the roll, Ms. Ridley?
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Rineer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, we're ready for a motion, if you're ready, for the new school design, whether one-story or two-story. Is there a motion for one or either?
I make a motion that we go ahead with the two-story design.
Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion and a second, that we go with the two-story design. Ms. Ridley, would you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
Dr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Rineer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. We'll progress now, as the schedule shows, immediately in doing the plan of how everything will fit in the schools. Thank you.
And a thank you to the representatives, Johnson, Bailey. Appreciate y'all being here tonight.
Mr. Barrett?
And thank you, Gary, for all your hard work in bringing these alternatives to us with the two-story versus the one-story.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Still in action items, Dr. Gilbert?
And speaking of Gary, the approval of the 2011-2012 end-of-the-year budget amendment.
Yes, we are two months ahead of schedule to get your end-of-the-year budget amendments. Our audit is moving along much more rapidly. We should have it for you in November. Last year, we got it in January, so we're ahead of schedule. These are the end-of-the-year housekeeping type of amendments. Under the state laws, we have to make sure that we have a budget that does not, our expenditures do not exceed our budget allocations. We received additional monies, as you can see from these. These are three budget amendments. One is for our general purpose budget, for a total of $270,000 more. The next one is our federal-state programs budget, which is for $594,366 additional, and the food service budget, which was $272,270. All three of these amendments will be, as I said, housekeeping, just to move things around in the accounts, to show that we receive the revenues and the expenditures, to balance our books, to present to City Council for their final approval as well. And this is a piece of putting the final audit together. So we're asking for your, of course, for your approval to make these amendments to our budget, to finalize that, to get it ready for the final audit.
Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson on the budget amendment? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved, a move that we approve the general purpose budget amendments?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you.
Okay, she said general purpose, which is the first one. We have three.
Okay, okay.
We need to do the federal and the food service ones as well.
Maybe I should just said amendments. Budget amendments.
All righty, since we had three, we'll entertain a motion for the...
Federal and food service.
Yes. We'll take them separately. We'll take federal first. Is there a motion for the approval?
Motion.
Oh.
Some move.
There's a motion and a second. Thank you. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, now we'll entertain a motion for the food revenues?
Some move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for that correction.
Thank you.
Action item C is approval of professional services agreement for insurance consultants, and that's Kelly's.
Hey, you have before you a contract to procure professional services for an insurance benefit consultant. The purpose of obtaining the consultant is, that is an individual that can go out and put out for, for bid insurance proposals, obtain insurance proposals. Specifically, we're looking at life insurance, dental, and vision. This is the same approach the city used when it revised some of its insurance benefits, is you use the consultant to develop the documents requesting the proposals, and then obtains the proposals and reviews them and submits them to the Board for approval.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Baker?
Under Section 4, termination breach, where it says 72 hours, would it be more appropriate to say three business days?
Either way, with work typically in the contracts, the language 72 hours has been used. If you prefer the three business days, I can do that as well.
Just sometimes 72 hours over a holiday weekend can occur without an opportunity to respond.
Okay.
Are there any more questions for Mrs. Baker concerning this consultant agreement? Mrs. Baker, what you handed us is for us to vote tonight on whether or not we want to get a consultant to take care of this?
Yes.
Okay, is there a, is there a cost?
The consultant is, in this industry, the way that the consultant is traditionally paid is when the bid is, the bid is awarded, the consultant receives a commission from that business that has awarded the bid. So there's no out-of-pocket cost, per se, to the system in that way.
Thank you. Are there any more questions for Mrs. Baker? If not, we'll entertain a motion to get a consultant to look into the, look for insurance companies for our life, dental, and vision insurance.
Some move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you.
Board policies?
Okay, the first policy that you have before you tonight for first reading is Board Policy BO45, social media use and internet posting. As we've discussed before, this policy is designed to set forth the guidelines for the school systems... the school system's use of social media on behalf of the school system. And some of the changes that the board had requested at the last policy session are included there in lines 13 and 14, where Facebook and MySpace may only be used by the Murfreesboro City Schools for educational or administrative purposes with supervision of the director and principal or supervisor. Does that revision reflect what the board had requested?
Yes, yes. I have comments.
Mrs. Phillips?
I wish that folks at home could see what we do sometimes in our policy study sessions. I just want the folks at home to know that this was a policy that we spent a great deal of time reviewing. Now, all policy is important. This one was particularly close to my heart. October is National Anti-Bullying Month, and I think it's important to know, there's an old saying that, you know, all movement is not forward motion and all, all change is not progress. Years ago, we didn't have to worry about a social media policy. Now, taking Facebook, and it's like, Facebook has changed what you are able to do and the different monitoring things that you can do. And with that in mind, Murfreesboro City Schools is not going to have a Facebook presence. I think that's, I'm okay with that because I would, I am not okay with Facebook ever being used in the Murfreesboro City Schools where someone could post something ugly about a single one of our children, or teachers, or administrators, or cafeteria workers, or any of our, any of our members of our Murfreesboro City School family. And so I commend the call, my colleagues on the board for taking action and with Ms. Baker's help for developing policy and Ms. Trail's help, that will, inasmuch as we are able to protect the folks that we have as, as members of our Murfreesboro City Schools family. And I just think that's very important. And I'm glad to do this, particularly in the month of October.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve this policy.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you tonight is Board Policy PER46. This policy is entitled Employee Use of Social Electronic Media. This policy is designed to put employees on notice how their use of elec, of social media can be impacted, impact their job, and to basically forewarn them that when they use their social media sites, they need to still uphold the professional standards that they must use in any other activity they do outside of school as far as keeping student information confidential, remaining discussions of coworkers in a professional manner. And that, this policy sets forth those guidelines as far as how our employees can utilize social media relative to their position as a professional in our school system.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Baker or any discussion on this policy before we entertain a motion? Mrs. Smith?
Yes. Ms. Baker, did you get a chance to look over those changes that I had made or suggested making on 45, 46, 45 through 49, essentially?
If you could, please, remind me of those changes you wanted made.
Essentially, the thought behind it is that you may communicate, the need for an employee to use electronic media to communicate with elementary students, that there is, there could be a need, and you should have parent and administrative approval, was what was behind that. And essentially, I was saying that people, that students may correspond with Murfreesboro City Schools faculty if they have approval from the parents and the administrators. And in a, in an emergency situation, the faculty member may also, if, if there is a situation that we talked about earlier about if a student needed to, or a, or a teacher felt compelled, they really need to reach out to the student individually, then that would be the emergency situation.
Okay, and the language currently reads that in situations where there is a need to communicate with a current Murfreesboro City School student through electronic media, written permission from the director or the director's designee is required. And your suggestion is to add "and" parent?
Well, Matt, the, the real problem I had was the need for an employee to use electronic media to communicate with elementary students instead of parents is remote. I think what I really wanted to do was say, yes, students can communicate with their teacher, teachers via electronic mail if they have the approval from parents and administrators.
So then add a sentence that students may communicate with the teachers if they have approval?
Well, faculty and students may communicate back and forth, rather than saying that it's remote. Because I don't think that it is remote. I think that students do communicate with their teachers via email, is, and if they have permission from their, from the administrator, from the principal, and the parent, then that should be okay.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that necessarily. I would want, whenever there is communication via email, I would want the principal copied.
This can still be amended before, at the next study section before the second reading, can it?
Yes, it can. I will insert language to that effect for the next study session. We're to consider to the fact that students and faculties may communicate utilizing social media with permission from the parent and the principal.
When you say social media, do you mean email or other social media?
Not electronic media. I mean, I mean email.
Electronic media.
Mrs. Phillips, and then Mrs. Renier?
Just because I'm not familiar with all the, what electronic media would include, I would need to know what that would include.
We, we actually have that defined, it's starting at line 53.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I see, I see.
You see? And if a...
That would include, that would take us back to Facebook and my, and I'm not happy with that at all.
If a teacher chooses, now, this is how the two policies interconnect. If a teacher chooses to utilize social media as one of the methods they communicate with their students as part of their job, they have to fall back on the prior policy that you approved and go through those steps to get approval to use it, to have those communications, those constant communications with their students utilizing, for example, the Twitter. Or, and as we have designated in the prior policy, Facebook requires a higher standard of approval in order to utilize.
Clearly, I need more discussion on this later. To really understand it.
Mrs. Renier, and then?
Well, that was going to basically be my question, that it's kind of taking us back to where we began before. I thought that this, we assumed this would be a rather remote situation rather than something that is typically practiced. And I thought that's what we were trying to stay away from. So again, maybe more discussion at our next session.
Mrs. Baker, do we need a motion to table this until our next policy session?
If you want to move it forward on first reading, you can make that motion, or if you would like to table it and bring it back to the policy session, that is your other option.
I think, because there's quite a bit of discussion, so I think we'll need to. We'll entertain a motion to table this PER46 and bring it back to our policy session. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to table to our policy session. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Do any oppose? Thank you.
Okay, then next policy that you have before you for first reading is Board Policy BO20, Director's Evaluation. This policy has some minor changes made to it based on changes in state statute. You'll see there at lines 11 through 14 are the revisions that were made to this policy based on some additions to the state statute.
Is there any discussion or questions for Ms. Baker? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on the first...
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you.
The next policy that you have before you is Board Policy 46, Regarding Charter Schools. This is a new policy. This is a policy that has been recommended by the Tennessee State School Board Association. And it is based on the state statutes that deal with the responsibilities that school boards have relative to review and approval of charter school applications. The, the changes that were suggested at the last meeting, there were some minor typographical changes. I inserted those. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them.
Mrs. Renier?
I believe at line 104, that all charter schools that include high schools, grades nine through 12, must be accredited by, I think ours was Advanced Ed. But we had a question as to whether or not a school beyond sixth grade, whether charter school beyond sixth grade, if someone wanted to open one, like a K-12, whether or not that would be, would affect us? Or would that be Rutherford County? And I don't know if we had that clarified or not.
It is my understanding that, that if a charter school came to us, they would need to follow the same formula that we do in a pre-K through six formula.
Okay.
So if they were going outside of that range, then it would fall into the other...
Okay, so then, then we're perfect as far as removing that line. That's great.
If there are no other questions, we'll entertain a motion for approval on first reading.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Is there any that oppose? Are there any? Thank you.
The next policy that you have before you tonight on first reading is Board Policy PER7, Evaluation of Staff. The revision that was made to this policy was the addition of language relative to the evaluation of non-licensed personnel. The policy had previously only addressed the evaluation of licensed teaching personnel.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Baker? Mrs. Renier?
I, I think maybe you just didn't realize you said PER7. This is 17, correct?
Yes, it's PER17, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Are there any questions concerning PER17? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for approval on first reading.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any that oppose? Thank you.
Okay, and the last policy before you tonight for first reading is Board Policy STU60, Relative to School Attendance Zones. This is a policy recommended by the Tennessee School Board Association, and it just basically is memorializing the fact that the school board is the party responsible under the statute for establishing school zones.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Baker.
Under reports and information, you have a report that where I'm going to ask Mr. Reinstaff to give about the collaborative conferencing process, please.
Thank you. On October the 9th at our last meeting, you asked me to give you a brief overview of the collaborative conferencing. During the month of October, the teachers can petition to participate, to have an election to participate in collaborative conferencing. They must have 15%. On October 9th, I received a petition, and I verified that they did have 15% teachers to sign that petition. Then, we have an equal number of school board members and teachers for a special question committee. That committee met on Monday, October 15th. The date of the election was decided upon to have today. And then tomorrow will be an opportunity for those who were absent today to be able to vote at central office. And the vote is two questions. Do you want to participate in collaborative conferencing? Yes, no? If so, which organization would you like to be represented by? If no, same options. If the majority votes yes, then there should be a management team consisting of seven to 11 members of management. Teachers will also select same number of represent, representation, representatives, and those members will participate in training between months of January and July. And then we go through the process of negotiations, collaborative conferencing, and then if those, if those teams agree, memorandum of understanding is presented to the school board. And that's basically it.
Are there any questions for Mr. Reinstaff? Mrs. Renier?
What kinds of things can be quote-unquote negotiated at collective conferencing, since this is a whole new ballgame? I don't, I don't know.
It is a whole new ballgame, but in reality, it's similar to what has been done in the past, instead of a contract, we have a memorandum of understanding, pay, wages can be negotiated, benefits, insurance, deductions, dues deductions, and things like that.
Do we still allow our teachers dues deductions?
We are this year.
Payroll deductions?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Will that end?
If...
I mean, is that something that's in the works?
Well, that's a negotiable item.
Oh, okay, that is. Can I make one comment? I had heard from several people that I don't know if this date was something that was well thought out because this was the middle of parent conferences for the teachers, and I think some of them were concerned about being able to vote.
Yes, ma'am. And teachers really selected that, did they?
Okay.
The difficulty, I think, is with the law, there's such a, such a short period that this has to be turned around in.
Right.
So you have the month of October to get all this finished, and unfortunately, our parent-teacher conferences. But I think we were clear, my understanding is that we were clear that the teachers should be given the opportunity to vote.
Okay, good. Well, I'm, I'm glad that we clarified that for them, so they understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reinstaff. Reports and information, we're down now to Mr. Anderson, probably.
We are. Very good.
The revenue and expenditure report on year-to-date, we, last year at this time, we were $4,396,000 negative. This year, we're $2,648,000. This is normal for us to be negative at this time of year. It's good news that we're not negative as much as last year, and we still came through last year fine as well. So we are in good shape as far as our budget goes through the first 25% of the year, because this report is through September. When you go to the revenue page on, on the next page, our sales tax revenue is up slightly at this time, collections of $17,000 above where we were last year, and other county revenues are up $49,000. So that's good news that, that the county and the city are doing well as compared to the rest of the state. So that's, that's good to see. Overall, we're at the 14.8% of revenue, which is exactly the same percentage year-to-date as we were last year at this time. The next page on the, on the expenditure side, again, it's at the 25 percentile, we're at 19.5. One of the biggest... One of the biggest differences here is that we have not received our workers' compensation bill yet. And that, if you remember last year when that came in, that's pretty substantial, between $300,000 and $400,000. So we'll get that eventually. So a lot of this is timing of when things hit us. But as of right now, we feel we're in good financial shape as a district as a whole. Anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to entertain those. Okay, the next item is the enrollment numbers. As I mentioned earlier, we're up 3.3% over where we ended last year at this time. We're 83 more students above what we had projected the year to be. So that's wonderful news to have that number. Our PTR ratios are still holding very strong at a 19.02 for grades K through 3. Remember, the state max is 20. And we're at 20.88 for 4 through 6, and the state max on that is 25. So we are in excellent shape on our PTR ratios and our enrollment numbers. So we're feeling very confident at this time. As you know, during the year, our enrollment does increase more, so we're feeling pretty good about that. We should be at that magic number to share in the growth monies in January and then again in May. So we're looking forward to that. Anyone have any questions about our enrollment at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there any other business that you'd like to see on the agenda for our policy session or our next meeting? Mr. Barrett?
Do we want to announce our joint meeting we're having on Thursday, or are we not? We're not going to. I guess we got
It is advertised.
Is it? Okay.
Yes, sir, but you're welcome.
Well, no, we're having a joint meeting with Rutherford County School Board and Murfreesboro City School Board and the state legislators on Thursday at, was it 6:30, at the central office? At the Rutherford County Central Office.
So I'm pretty sure we'll all be there.
Be there, be there.
And since we don't have any other business, only other business is saying a hello to Mr. Campbell, who we miss being with us tonight, but he's under the weather. So please check on him.
And so is his wife.
Oh, yeah, she's having a wait on him.
That's what I mean. She's not ill. She's just having to deal with a sick man or one who's not feeling well.
Yes.
And we all know how they are.
Oh, well, we won't bother that anymore. And if there are no other questions or any other comments, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.